As being come to order, this is a study session Tuesday, December 13, 2016. Thank you for coming today and listening to what we have offered in a way of a study session. I won't be taking any comments today because we've got a really full schedule with both the study session, the executive session, and a pretty long and extensive voting session. So, the people that are presenting today, I'd like you to try and hold about 20 minutes, if you can, so that we can have a chance to adjourn and go on to an executive session. Roll call, please.
Mayor Oberg.
Here.
Mayor Protam Lamerson.
Here.
Councilwoman Blair.
Here.
Councilwoman Lozelle.
Here.
Councilwoman Orr.
Here.
Councilwoman Shiska.
Here.
And Councilwoman Wilcox.
Here.
All present.
First item, please.
Item A, review and discussion of city contract number 2017-149 with Buxton Company in the amount of $48,000 for a retail recruitment assistance tool and the provision of unique visitor spending data in support of the city's tourism development program.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Jeff Burt, Economic Initiatives. For your consideration today is a one-year, $48,000 contract with Buxton Company in order to acquire some tools to enhance Prescott's competitiveness for retail business and tourism development. We think that is central to the underlying mission for Economic Initiatives to grow the economy and increase the city's general fund revenues, and of course, that means sales tax. The cost of the contract as presented is equally shared by the economic development budget and the bed tax fund. However, given the significant impact that visitors have on our taxable sales, this may be a project to be considered wholly funded under the bed tax fund. The Buxton tool will help us align the Prescott market with sighting criteria of companies that we would like to go after as destination retailers to draw in additional sales tax. With this tool, we will be able to identify and enable us to provide information specific to the retailer's own sighting requirements. In turn, we believe the retailers will provide an additional draw for visitors, i.e. tourists, to come into our market to spend their dollars at our retailers. Examples of the destination retailers would be something like Costco and Trader Joe's. The more that we can attract consumers from outside the market, and typically, destination retailers are going to be able to help us draw people from beyond 50 miles, so they are definitely a different breed of retailer that we want to go after. For this effort, Wendy Bridges, our economic development coordinator, will be leading this effort. Additionally, with the Buxton tool, they will be able to deliver some consumer data that is very unique to them. It's a database that will help tourism better target where our visitors are coming from and to grow the visitor traffic. The tool actually utilizes real-time data, a spending data that's aggregated to ZIP codes under visa spending, and it will be unique for us in being able to do that. And because of the visa component, it is unique to the industry that we would be able to get access to this data. Dawn Prince will be leading the charge with this activity. Additionally, with these tools, we'll be able to utilize the spending data to help document the return on investment that Prescott gets for spending its time and money on tourism development activity, and it will also help us document the level of taxable sales and spending, retail sales tax that are coming from outside the city and therefore attributable to non-residents of the city. The contract has an option for a second and third year, but these will be at the behest of approval of council. With us today is Lisa Hill-McKay. She is here from Buxton, as well if there are any technical questions you may have regarding the program. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Councilwoman Wilcox?
Jeff, can you tell us, will we be able to differentiate between local spending and outside of Prescott spending with this tool?
Yes, that is correct. The data are broken down by ZIP code.
Okay.
So, we'll know because it comes from, literally from, visa cards.
But it's only for visa cards, not MasterCard?
It's only for visa.
If a person has a bank card that's both a debit and a visa card, and they use the debit function, it won't track that, will it?
I think as long as it's a visa card, we have access to the data.
Oh, okay. Good. Excellent.
But it is by ZIP code and then a four-digit addition, so it's aggregated, so you don't know who the actual, you know, spending comes from, but you can tell the ZIP code it comes from, and you can also tell the items for which the spending was spent on. So, it would be very helpful.
So, it should help give us better data on spending that comes from tourism or outside Prescott, as opposed to Prescott residents?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Very good.
Councilwoman Shiska?
Thank you, Mayor. Hey, Jeff, you know, kind of piggybacking onto Jeans, if it's Williamson Valley, if it's part of the county, I mean, it's, you know, Prescott ZIP codes, it's a local ZIP code, so, you know, that's not going to be anything that we can take a look at, is, you know, what actually comes into the city from local ZIP codes?
As long as the ZIP code is outside the ones that are literally for, in the boundary of Prescott, we'll be able to tell that.
Okay.
So, it will be discreet to that level.
My main question was, it says Buxton's current and past client list in Arizona includes the cities of Flagstaff, Somerton, Kingman, Bullied City, and the Arizona Office of Tourism. Have you talked to any of those people and asked them about the success that they had with the program?
We did talk to them. Not all of them are currently using it. They've used it in the past. The data are very helpful because no one else has this data. Buxton's the only one that has the proprietary data for the visa data. So, because of that, it really lets you hone in on, and that's what they were trying to use this for, was to be very discreet about where the data are coming from, what kind of spending was being done, and what types of stores then would the community be best aligned in terms of growing or recruiting.
Thank you. Councilwoman Orr?
Jeff, can you give me an example of destination retailers that we might be able to, an advantage to do in this? We have Costco, we have Trader Joe's.
Mm-hmm.
But what are some others that?
Well, for example, luxury car brands could be in there. You might also have one like, happens to be one of my favorites, the Container Store.
Yeah.
I seem to have a lot of stuff I need to put in containers, but it's stores like that that really are unique. You usually only see one or two, let's say, within a 100-mile radius.
Right. So, people will travel 50 miles to go to that store.
That is correct.
And I'm glad to see that and to hear they are open to considering this coming out of bed tax. I see, I was at the tax meeting when this was discussed, and I see the advantage of what it will do to our general fund, and seems that some of that should come from general fund, but with the situation that we're in today, until we have a plan for taking care of the debt, I think a better plan might be to go bed tax.
Councilwoman Lozelle?
Thank you, Mayor. Jeff, what's the end game here? Are we, is it, is it two-pronged? Are we looking to recruit businesses? Are we looking to increase our tourism? What, I mean, do we not have enough tourism? Do we not have enough retail? What's the end game?
Really, there are two components to that. One is bring in retailers who would be additive, not a retailer that's going to just carve up maybe what's already being done within the retail sector, but also because of the data we will have access to, we will know literally where the people are coming from that are spending, and it will let us be more targeted where we're spending our limited advertising dollars to try to bring tourists into the city. And frankly, it'll also show us the people who are coming from, that are spending the most. So, we'll really be able to...
On visa.
Qualitate you.
Visa only.
On visa only. That's correct.
Because I travel with cash. I don't use a credit card when I travel. But I guess if we're looking for a major retailer that's a destination retailer, from an extensive retail background I have, there's departments in that business, alls they do is look for markets to move to.
Absolutely.
They don't need data. They collect their own. That's why you go in there and you get pestered by saying, "What ZIP code are you from?" Because they want to know if there's a need to go there.
Mm-hmm.
So, anybody with credence, as far as anyone that you named, is already doing that. So, I just wanted to point that out.
And, Councilman, we did take that into consideration. I think one of the items here is, we want to try to separate ourselves from the other markets out there that might have a similar profile, and by being able to present them the data that matches up with them, we're hoping that that frankly is going to give us a leg up on that market. Lisa, did you want to add something?
I want to just clarify something on visa. A couple of things. We're actually the leading analytic provider to over 3,000 retail and restaurant concepts. So, Trader Joe's, Costco, Target, California Pete's Kitchen, they leverage our data to make those location decisions that you're talking about. So, what this is, is a reverse engineer. In the public sector, because Trader Joe's is so sought after, and they're getting approached every day by communities that would like to have a Trader Joe's, and unfortunately, don't have compelling data to show they're using demographics, which is a very, kind of baseline, very simple way of defining your market. So, using the same customer analytic data will allow you to be proactive. And the other clarification is, we have over 250 different data sources that we pull about your trade area. So, we're not just pulling visa. We have every credit card reporting tool. We also use reward card data. We look at warranty cards. We look at magazine subscriptions. We look at media channels. So, whether you're a cash customer or not, I mean, I'm working with El Paso Texas I'm working with, and we have a lot of customer bases that are cash-based customers. The clarification on visa is, we are the only company in the world that has transactional level credit card data. The other credit card reporting tools don't give us a granularity to really define whether or not you came into this market and spent apparel versus stayed at a hotel versus a restaurant. So, that level of granularity is exclusive to our company, and that gives us the ability to better quantify what's happening in these different markets and what that potential cyclical population of people, you know, what they look like.
Sure.
So, Acxiom, InfoUSA, Simmons, Claritas, Esri, if you're familiar with some of these data sources from the retail world, we buy all of that. We're the largest buyers of that type of information. So, again, we're not looking at any one thing. We're looking at a number of data sources, but the transactional level information is very big brother, and it gives us the ability to. We've done visitor projects now for Santa Monica, for Palm Springs, for the Arizona Office of Tourism, for Georgetown DC, for Beverly Hills. So, we've got a lot of customers, public sector clients, that are saying, "Hey, we've got a great market already. We're Beverly Hills, but we want to know what impact that visitor has on our market so that we can maybe increase our sales tax and put more money into our city coffers," or maybe just better service those people. You know, maybe we're missing something.
Okay, thank you.
Uh-huh.
And Jeff, one last thing. I have to agree with Councilwoman Orr. I can't support this unless it's coming totally out of the bed tax, if I do support it, but it would be a deal breaker if, for sure, if it came out of general fund.
Understood.
Any other comments, questions from the council? Well, I know a lot of other towns, particularly Sedona and Flagstaff, they spend a lot more money on advertising we do, and anything we can do right now to try and understand the environment out there for tourism and be able to improve our ability to reach out to other localities that might be interested in coming to Prescott, I think this is a good tool. I guess one of the things I'm a little worried about is, what kind of reporting are we going to get? You know, we've taken on various contracts in the past, and it seems like we don't get any kind of reporting back, except maybe at the end of the year. I think it'd be valuable to get at least a quarterly report telling us exactly, you know, what you're finding out there and, because I think it's important for us to see the benefits of the program, and I agree with some of the other council people here. And I think this needs to come out of bed tax, not out of general fund. And, you know, I think our bed tax money is finite, so we want to ensure that it's being well-spent, and so I think we need to have reporting either from you or from Lisa or something, probably on a quarterly basis.
We will do that, yes, sir.
Okay. Well, since there's no more questions or comments on this, I think I've got a consensus from the council to move forward and bring this to the voting agenda next week.
Thank you very much.
Next item?
Item B, presentation of the city's stormwater management program, federal and state rules and current and future program activities.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Pleasure to be here before you today, and I'm here to give you kind of an update and progress report along the way of what we're doing to deal with the surface water quality issues this city faces. So, to overview this, I'll start off with an update of the contract we have with AMIC Foster Wheeler. This would typically have been followed by a little bit of a regulatory background, but given the nature of your schedule today, we're going to largely skim through that at best. It is available in the agenda packet. If you do have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them or enter a dialogue with you at a later point. The third issue is kind of where the meat of the presentation is, dealing with our MS4 permit and the new realities we're facing there. And then finally, we'll kind of have the end to show where we're going to be moving in the near future. So, AMIC Foster Wheeler update, this is a contract that council approved in October of 2015, and we've broken it down into three steps here for you. The first are those areas that have been completed, including kind of the action plan for regulatory compliance. This was followed up by the Granite Creek watershed monitoring plan. This one has been recently finalized. ADQ is currently reviewing it both on the TMDL side of the House as well as the permit side of the House. We have not yet received any questions or clarifications for them, but I am in active dialogue with them to make sure we're moving in the right direction. Ongoing, and actually, this first item I have an update on, Watson Lake Reservoir Water Quality Data Monitoring Plan. That one has actually finalized, and tomorrow will be the first of 12 monthly monitoring events held at Watson Lake. So, we'll be out there early in the morning to get them started off. That came to fruition through some great inter and extra departmental cooperation. So, recreation definitely helped us out to save significant costs in achieving that. So, our thanks to them for that. The Upper Granite Creek Watershed Model, that one is scheduled to be completed in March of 2017. That's looking at all the water quality data that's out there ADQ and other private entities have compiled, so we can start kind of tinkering with the system and isolating variables to understand what we can do as a city through municipal operations such as street sweeping or otherwise to improve the water quality of our lakes and creeks. The Watson Lake Reservoir Model, this one has a pretty kind of far horizon completion date, and that's largely because we're required to get a year's worth of data, so that's once a month for the next 12 months. So, that one is tentatively scheduled at this point for December of 2017. The final steps will come before you later on as a contract amendment to the initial contract you approved in October 2015, and that will be the actual plans that look at watershed, the watershed more specific to the creeks, and then also regarding the lake as well. Those will come in in somewhat staggered nature. We're going to kind of blaze through the stormwater here, so stormwater is things that our streets and roads collect and deposit in our many creeks.
Mr. Mayor, if I could?
Go ahead.
You can go back to the other slide there, please?
Yes, sir.
Next one, back. You guys went through that. Okay, I know, I understand the final steps. We've got to do these other ones first. When do we, when do you expect, even take consideration of this elected body? We've got the funds. We've got the orders. We've got to do X. When does that start all happening?
Well, I think that the, if you consider that the watershed model would be completed in March, that allows us to start tinkering with the model, so we could start stepping forward at that point in time. So, that would be actual making changes on the ground and working with our contractor, AMIC Foster Wheeler, to get that final watershed pollution reduction plan.
So, that's the plan.
Mm-hmm.
When will the citizens start seeing their money working to reduce the pollutants?
It's working already, and we are documenting that, and I'll be speaking directly to that as well coming up here shortly.
Okay, thank you.
So, so, once again, this is EPA Clean Water that is delegated to the state. Arizona Department of Environmental Quality, the initial permit for our municipal separate storm sewer system, otherwise known as MS4, was issued in 2002, and in previous presentations, you may have heard that they were going to reissue this permit. Technically, they're supposed to reissue that every five years, so they were a little bit behind the curve on that one. But then in September, after a period of public involvement, they went kind of quiet and came out and said, "We're going to be issuing a new permit on September 30th." We had about two weeks' notice and received a new draft of the new MS4 permit. This had pretty significant differences than the previous iteration that was available for public comment, and so all the MS4 communities were kind of scrambling to understand the implications of what this meant. At the same time, we submitted our fiscal year 2016 report. That was quickly approved with no additional items requested or required. Essentially, we did what we were supposed to and demonstrated compliance across all the parameters within that MS4 permit. So, this new permit, as I mentioned, does have some pretty significant changes, and some of the core requirements are here before us now. And I've kind of broken them down into, in this case, a reverse chronological order. And so, two years from now, we'll be required to demonstrate that we have enforcement procedures and an enforcement response plan in place. Now, we've got the bones of that already in place through our code, city code, and we've already entered dialogue with the legal department on how we can tighten those up to make sure that we meet these requirements. So, we're in good standing on that one already. The storm sewer system mapping is going to be due a year from now. I've been working extensively with Kat Moody in our GS department, and she's been incredibly responsive, and we're in very good condition right now to meet that goal as well. The analytical monitoring implementation, so for our impaired waters, which are Manzanita, Butte, Miller, and Granite Creeks, we're required to go out and do E. coli testing on those. Technically, those are not going to be due, those results, until June of 2017. We're doing it already in-house as a method to identify what costs we're likely to encourage going down the line. So, for budget purposes, for capital improvement plans or otherwise, we want to have a better understanding of what the costs are to the city as well as the human capital that's required to make this happen. And then finally, stormwater management plan, a revision of that is due in March of 2017. The stormwater management plan, we have one already, however, it's just about 10 years old, and it goes through and hits these six steps. And so, we are working with AMIC Foster Wheeler on this, and next week, we'll be going through and reviewing what we have and then doing a field visit of all the facilities that play into our stormwater permit and our management program. The analytical monitoring, so when it starts raining out there and you first notice that trickle coming down the gutter, I'm underneath a bridge somewhere with a cup of water, getting ready to catch it. There is a big emphasis in this case on the first flush emphasis, meaning that first 15 minutes runoff is where the pollutants are typically most heavily concentrated. So, for us to be able to collect that, it helps us identify those areas that we need to clean up. There are some issues with lab availability. We're working hand-in-hand with our wastewater treatment plant. They do have a water laboratory, and we're looking at the cost-benefit ratio of bringing them into certification for the E. coli so we can reduce our costs in that realm as well. Currently, we only able to use the one out of Bradshaw Mountain, out of Prescott Valley, and that's more costly than it would be potentially if we bring it in-house. So, again, we're looking at the costs. We're also looking at partners such as Yavapai County who could help defray some of those costs by paying for their own lab processing. Like I said, this is time and cost intensive. Currently, each single sample that I take is 50 bucks a pop, and in order for me to be out there when that first flush happens, at times, I'm sitting in a truck, watching those clouds come in and trying to predict where it's going to runoff first to the other. The other thing that should be of particular importance or relevance to us is that we're currently only required to do this on the four impaired waters that are previously mentioned. However, Arizona Department of Environmental Quality has proposed an additional seven or eight water bodies in our area to be impaired. And so, let's see if I can get the...
We got a question here for a second.
Yes.
Councilwoman Lozelle?
Yeah, I noticed on that little graph back, as far as the enforcement, on the construction site controls, waddles, for instance.
Yeah, I heard your discussion.
And under the current code, is that a blanket code, or is it that we have, we're under the ADQ, are we required that all construction sites have to do that?
That is city code, and it is a requirement so that sediment does not leave the site.
Sure, I understand the reason, but are they required on all sites, no matter, you know, any new construction? Or does the city have some leeway to say, "There's not a drainage problem. You don't need them there." Are we required by the state to just, you have to do it everywhere?
We have to make sure that sediment does not leave the site.
You're repeating yourself. Okay, do we have a leeway as a city to loosen those restraints up?
We have to make sure that the sediment, I know, broken record. Bear with me, bear with me. So, what we need to do is fine-tune how our inspectors, our staff engage with these folks about, if we're going to use those, make sure we use them where they count.
Right.
To not ask for extraneous ones. And to that point, every single family residence building permit that goes out has a schematic of erosion control principles. We're already reviewing that right now.
So, we do have some flexibility to make it our own?
As an example, yes. So, and the schematic that goes out with the permits, it currently shows a ring of waddles all the way around a property. Water's not going to run uphill. So, you know, do we need to have it on that uphill side if it's not going to pose a larger threat, run onto the site, as an example could? So, what we're doing is showing, flow is going this way. Let's make sure we have our control measures, our BMPs, in place where they work, not in other areas where they don't.
Okay. Thank you.
So, we are working on tightening that up currently. It's in process. I met with all of the public works inspectors last week to get their input as well, because they're the guys, those are the boots out in the ground that see this stuff, and that's where we can affect change.
And now, on a lighter note, now I know what you're doing under the bridge when I see you down there.
So, back to the other impaired waters, we'll bring additional monitoring into place. I don't know if it'll show up on this. So, I'll just do it more verbally than laser-wise. So, Government Canyon, as you see just below the label for Upper Granite Creek, Watson Lake, just above it, Slaughterhouse-Gulch. The Prescott label in the middle with the Pentagon there is, that represents Virginia Street Wash. There's also a wash that runs through Yavapai College by the ball fields. Banning Creek will be listed potentially. Aspen Creek, North Fork of Miller, which is that little tail that goes almost vertical, and then the North Fork of Granite as well. All of those have been proposed by ADQ. We did provide a comment on it, and they, for the most part, addressed some of the naming conventions, but didn't really accept the heart of our debate at the time. So, what that means is we're going from four to 12-ish impaired waters. For reference, when we've been in dialogue with AMIC Foster Wheeler on what it would take to do this, for the existing four streams, I estimated at least one full-time employee at anywhere from $90,000 to $40,000. We're doing that in-house currently, just so we can have a... We're doing that in-house currently, just so we can inform our process going forward. But when this stuff hits the fan, um, we're, we're going to be beyond capacity, quite frankly.
Matt, when do you expect this to hit the fan?
So, ADQ is required to submit this every two years. EPA is not required to review it except for every fifth year. And so it just depends on what's going on at EPA. And that could be in flux. There could be a, a shift in emphasis here in the near future. Or it could be something that's left and, and they would have an additional number of years before they have to address it.
Quickly, so I understand how ADQ works. I'm, in my mind, I think you know how it works. But it, it's hard to help figure out how those folks work. Are they getting their, their priorities and their dictates from the EPA?
To some degree, yes. There is funding that comes down through EPA to them and that has come with strings attached in terms of their enforcement of this permit and large MS4 permit as well.
So if on the federal end, let's say their policy outlook changes and gets tweaked or reduced or eliminated, ADQ will change with them most likely?
Most likely. This is regulation in place. The emphasis on enforcement may change. Everything I've heard suggests that clean water and air remain a priority going forward. So we have to...
And I have nothing against clean water, I, but...
No.
I have, but overburdened some regulations I have a problem with.
I, I think, you know, it's in our best effort to go for it as it is now. We can adjust as necessary.
Okay.
To get, if, if we're not preparing ourselves for what's in writing and in action in place now, um, we could end up with surprises of the not-so-pleasant variety.
Sure.
Either from a cost perspective internally or coming externally from that.
You bet.
So...
Got a quick question for you on this map that you just had up there. Could you superimpose the city limits on it in the future?
Uh, it is, um, there's a very faint in this light, pink block. Um, oh, thank you. So the, you see that square?
All right, that's good enough. I missed that.
We, we will be updating it to reflect those proposed impaired waters and we can work on bringing a little more contrast into that picture as well.
Okay, we also got a question from Councilman Blair.
Yes, sir.
Commercial and residential sites, when they come for a permit and they're told where they have to re, have the waddles and the rocks for ingressygress, not to track, you know, soils out onto the, you know, pavement. Some of the stuff I understand, but what I don't understand is who is measuring when those waddles come down? There's waddles out there all over this community.
Right.
That are still in place, that are absolutely ridiculous. So if we're going to manage them going in, we need to manage them coming out. And we're not doing a very good job of that.
Yeah, and actually, to that point, we recently had some stabilization control measures at the lows. And we realized that they had achieved that site stabilization, which is based on a 70% background, 70% of what your background vegetation rate is. So if you got 100% covered, you have to return it to at least 70% to say that you've achieved that final stabilization.
So we're looking at a way to track those, even on the residential side?
Um, I'd, I'd have to double-check to see how and where that takes place. I don't have it at the top of my...
You know, I mean, from my standpoint, you go to other communities, whether it be in Texas or no matter where it might be, uh, they put waddles on the drainage facilities in the gutter to make sure they're not getting washed in and filled in with silt and that kind of stuff.
Exactly.
However, at some point in time, those have to go away. They're not permanent fixtures. I don't see any process that we have in place now to do that. So hopefully, we'll be working on that.
Yeah, there is a, a step in that process that makes it difficult because at some point in time, that homeowner becomes the operator. And so it also is a case where we can provide better education to inform those residents that they will have an ability to pull those out once they reach this set goal. And so there, there are ways we can improve that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we have another question from Councilwoman Wilcox.
Hi, Matt.
Hi.
I didn't see anything in your report about involving Prescott Creeks in the efforts to clean up the watershed. And I think there is a wonderful opportunity to have a private partnership with a well-established nonprofit corporation, 25-years-old, in this community with a lot of volunteers. They get over 200 people out on the ground cleaning up the Watson Woods once a year. And I would really like to see you and city manager sit down with Michael Byrd and find out ways that Prescott Creeks, we could tap Prescott Creeks and work together on this effort.
It's, uh, it, timely that you should mention that. I met with them on Friday along with ADQ. And so we're looking at coordinate ways of measuring how the green infrastructure we've put into place is working. And we have hard data on that already that show E. coli reductions as they go through these green infrastructure, whether it's the adult center, Whipple Basin, otherwise known as Taco Basin, and, and, and now the rodeo grounds as well. In each one of those cases, we're documenting through coordination with them and ADQ reductions in pollutant loads. And we were just figuring out how, to make sure we were all on the same page going forward so that we can add to that database and utilize each other in a complimentary fashion.
Great.
Ms. Wilcox, I have a follow-up meeting with Mr. Byrd in the next few days, too.
So, uh, this is kind of our looking forward, just to kind of throw out the big, uh, kind of timeframes that we're looking at. As I mentioned before, um, we're in pretty good shape on all these things, but they do represent significant challenges. So going forward, stormwater management plan and the notice of intent ADQ, analytical monitoring starts. At that same time, extensive in-house training will be required for all city staff that have a chance of interacting with stormwater discharge. So Streets Department, I mean, you, you name it, virtually everyone, um, can benefit from this in helping clean up our city. GIS mapping, we're in good shape there. The annual report will be another challenge going forward. Enforcement Authority and Response Plan, already got that stuff. Kind of, that dialogue started with Legal Department. They provided some very insightful advice on how we can tighten things up. And, and, and just to note on that, our goal is to achieve voluntary compliance, not to go through an enforcement. We understand that our code enforcement is already kind of extended over, overextended. And so whatever we can do to reach that voluntary compliance ahead of time is what our goal is internally. We're not just going to be, you know, shoving cases off to an already overburdened staff. So that's part of our goal, is to make sure that we can do that. So in summary, this new MS4 permit represents a pretty significant increase in workload. And I think it's notable that not only just to implement this, to get all of the, you know, these parts that they have required on these timelines I've mentioned, but in annual operations, they're upping the bar in terms of the amount of trainings that take place, the monitoring that takes place, all of these things. Uh, we're trying to be smart about how we take those on with an eye towards the future, both from a budget perspective and a, and a, or human resource perspective. One of the reasons we're in good shape right now is because of the foundation that's laid, been laid here, both since I've been here, but also long before that. We'd be in a lot worse shape, as many other MS4 communities are, if we didn't have some really good bones on this, on the body of this permit. So that's helped us immeasurably. And in the future, these costs will continue to rise as these impaired waters come on board. And we're going to have to get creative at some point in time to think about how we fund these opportunities and obligations. And whether that is through more partnerships, through capital improvement projects. And someday, I know this is not something that's going to go over well, given the current kind of budgetary realities we all face, stormwater utilities may be something down the line that makes sense. But we're going to do that if and when we get to that point. It will be from an informed place where we have our numbers to bring before you. Um, with that, I'll, happy to take any questions you may have.
Questions, comments from the council?
I have one. Talk to me a little bit more about the coordination with the county. Uh, the reason why I asked about the city limits, if you look at the map, a lot of the creeks start outside in the county where we have a lot of septic. Uh, we know that a lot of times, septic's are not properly maintained and, um, they probably get into the watershed. Then those creeks flow through Prescott and then end up in our, in our lakes that we have as part of our water portfolio. So what kind of coordination are you doing with the county to give, you know, trying to determine some of their responsibility for the level of contamination that we have in our streams?
So I'll address that kind of in, in two parts. The first one is, uh, we realize that the, what ADQ and others consider the background level of these pollutants coming to a system, I, I believe they're undervalued. Just the nature of forest management, extended periods of drought concentrates wildlife around the waters that we have. And as such, you see increased pollutant loads coming off of the forest and other open lands. So we've already started to document that and done repeated sampling, as an example, off of White Spar where the city bounds the forest. Just like I'm under the bridge, I'm running out there with a cup to try to catch that first flush of water coming off the forest. So we can document and show that, look, we're starting with the deck, in some cases, stacked against us. So one is we're trying to document what is coming off of these open and natural lands and in some cases, county lands. Uh, on Monday, I was actually at the county, working with Paul Youngen and his superiors on some different, uh, management plans to look at how they manage stormwater coming off of county lands into some of these impaired waters. I think it was Miller specifically. So what we're doing is we're sharing data now, data that we and Prescott Creeks and others have compiled. We're going to share that with them so that they can form their land management operations with an eye towards reducing stormwater pollution and runoff. So those conversations are happening, um, but on the septic front, there's definitely, I think, more that we can do.
So you're telling me then that we could also look at, uh, people who control the other, uh, public lands, state, uh, US Forest Service? And there's a possibility that they could be working with us on those, too?
I, I, I think this is a large-scale problem and it's not isolated to our city limits. And so finding as many partners as we can and trying to improve the water quality is, is the best possible outcome.
Okay. Mayor Proton?
Thank you. Thank you for publicly acknowledging that it's not solely the citizens of Prescott that have created the mess that's out there in these various watersheds and creeks and the two bodies of waters we kind of get out there. And I do think that we need to be working in a collaborative manner with some of the other agencies, um, and try to legally hold accountable some of the other folks, besides just the people of Prescott. I mean, you know, at, at the end of the day, while we may be able to assess some sort of a watershed protection fee, et cetera, in the city limits of Prescott, it's not solely the city limits of Prescott that are contributing to the problems in the various watersheds. So I, I do think it's incumbent on our staff, I mean, you and the rest of them out there, on our staff to work with the different agencies that are also paid for by we, the taxpayers all over the county, all over the state, and federally, to bring the dollars that are expected to be spent to clean up the mess that the whole thing is, is, has been done. It's just not us. So...
Well, one, uh, good point you raised in that is that, thinking about it like on a state level, um, in the response to comments regarding all these new impaired waters that could come to pass, Pima County noted some of the very same issues that we have about background levels being elevated so that the water is coming in with higher levels than what ADQ is, is predicting or documenting out there. So we're not alone in, in sharing some of these ideas and opinions. And so I've already reached out to Pima County to figure out, um, what their approach is going to be on this and how are they going to try to address it as well. So there are, we're not isolated in that respect and we should view those other partners as resources.
Matt, could some of these other partners be trained to actually collect the sample? I mean, how difficult it would it be for some of the other public partners and, and surrounding jurisdictions? So you're not the only one out there at the end of the pipe.
Mm-hmm. So, uh, county does have monitoring requirements and they do it themselves. This was part of the discussion we had with Prescott Creeks and ADQ on Friday. And, uh, it's, it's, it's difficult to, uh, get a volunteer corps, a group, excited to go out on slippery rocks in wet and snowy conditions. There's safety issues as well. Fundamentally, we're handling water that's not clean. And so there are those kind of safety considerations and reliability. It's hard to get people motivated when it's 28 degrees out and it's a slush melt and you've got to go down a bank underneath that bridge. So we are definitely keeping that in mind. Something that could address that would be something in the form of partnering with local colleges to think about internships where they could gain valuable experience. They perhaps would be a little bit more athletic and rambligous to get underneath there. So those are all things that are in consideration at this point.
Councilman Blair?
I know we're short on time, but what, what avenues have you guys taken to look at like, uh, the retention pond at Walmart on Prescott Lakes Parkway, as an example? That thing's sat there now for five years and it's heavy loaded with fuels, including oil and everything else. So the, the seepage rate and the clean, cleaning rate through that pond is not what it should be. How do you go about holding them to a standard to clean up or educate them why those ponds were put there in the first place? I mean, that's an area that's not been addressed either.
So that's a kind of a, a combined effort of both education and enforcement. And so we currently have it so that they're called post-construction best management practices. We record the BMPs that are in place at these sites, detention facilities. Some of them use filter mechanisms to, to clean it out. So they submit a notarized agreement with the city that is recorded, so is tied to that parcel, so that if it changes hands, it's, it's there in perpetuity as well. And we go back and do annual inspections on some subset of those. So we make the rounds and contact those folks and say, "Your detention bond, you know, you've reached the point at which it's supposed to have a cleanup come through, you know, and here's the agreement that says as much."
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Proton?
Thank you. Outreach, very important issue. And how closely are you working with Prescott College? You know, their college here in the city limits of Prescott, that is one of the best environmental studies colleges in the United States.
Uh, so Friday's meeting, Joel Barnes with Prescott College was there. Um, we've exchanged information and have plans for me to go speak to the class in the coming semester. And also talked about some of the other things where they're kicking around, kind of getting back to that volunteer corps, things like, uh, Fieldwork Fridays. Where on a regular basis, I go out to help offset the, the requirements to our streets or parks departments with the maintenance of that. And it would be both a maintenance to, to make sure it's looking good and functioning well, um, as well as interpreting that site for students or other folks that want to come out and help. So it would be kind of a dual-purpose idea of, of making sure that these are performing adequately, but also sharing kind of the theories and practices that are behind them.
Thank you. I, I think anytime we can engage our educational institutions on a local level, the better off not only are the institutions, but the entire community.
Absolutely, and that's a core component of our management plan, of, of the stormwater management.
Any other questions, comments from the council? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item?
Item C, overview of the Fleet Services Division and the discussion of the draft fleet management policy.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Thank you for giving the opportunity to come up here and give you a brief overview of what the Fleet Services Division does and hopefully provide you some answers with any questions you might have from previous, you know, procurements that we've done. So, um, the Fleet Service Division, let's see if this goes, does work. Fleet Service Division is responsible for managing the city's vehicles, equipment, and mechanical needs. As our mission statement states, we provide comprehensive fleet management programs that support city departments and functions by ensuring that city vehicles and equipment are available, dependable, and safe to operate. We are a internal services fund, so we cost-recover by charging both the general fund at approximately 26% and enterprise fund at approximately 74%. Uh, we are, have an annual operating budget of $1.9 million and our, it's approximately $900,000 of that is in revolving inventory. We have three methods for charging our internal customers, which are the hourly rate for mechanics labor, a markup on parts inventory, and a markup on outside labor. Our current staffing levels include five full-time mechanics, one supervisor, one parts specialist, one fleet manager, and then two ti, uh, part-time mechanics from the local CTEC and JTED programs to help cover some of our workload. Our mechanic productivity rate is at 84%, which is much higher than the industry standard of 75%. And we have a vehicle-to-mechanic ratio of 113 to 1, which is also much higher than the standard 48 to 1 of government-industry standards. Our fleet makeup is a total of 568 assets with majority of them being light vehicles and some heavies, trailers, and other equipment in there, including generators. Fleet Services Department does more than just maintain vehicles. Uh, these are some of the following services we do, including maintaining vehicles... vehicles. Obviously, our main function is to maintain all the city assets. We work closely with department liaisons to monitor and schedule maintenance and repairs. The repairs are reported to the mechanics at Fleet Services and then we troubleshoot and repair deficiencies that are brought to us. We do take priority on how we maintain equipment. Our number one priority is our public safety vehicles, including police and fire, which we get out as quickly as possible. Our second is our essential services, which include solid waste, snow plows, and sewer vehicles and equipment. Then we follow that up with preventative maintenance that we try to schedule on time to make sure that we're maintaining the vehicles properly. Then we do our unscheduled maintenance, which are any of the breakdowns or walk-ins that we have, followed up by any of the moments that's probably maybe slipped by and not been done on time, we'll follow that up. And lastly, occasionally when we have time, we do modifications or fabrication to vehicles and equipment. Additionally, we are the responsible party for acquiring fleet, our assets, I'm sorry. We act as a procuring agency, which is why you see our name through on a lot of the memos for any of our additional assets or replacing assets. New additions are requested through the budget process and those are funded by the requesting department. New additions or replacements are evaluated to ensure that they're properly sized and that they meet the intended needs of the work. For example, recently, you guys saw the new one-ton replacements for snow plows. Those were vehicles that were purchased a long time ago. They were not meeting the load capacity to legally operate as a snowplow. Therefore, the Fleet Division made a determination that we should replace them with larger vehicles that had 18,000-pound payload capacity. So those are the kind of things we take into consideration. We also are responsible for accepting new assets. We thoroughly inspect the assets to verify that they conform to the specs and that we are receiving all of the options that we paid for on the equipment. We try to do this at the manufacturer's location so that we don't accept the asset before we make sure everything's correct on it. The asset can be test-driven by an equipment mechanic or by someone who's used to running the specialty equipment. And then we provide unique city numbers to the equipment and assign that asset with the logos and department names. We are also responsible for disposing of assets. Assets that meet requirements for disposal are turned into Fleet Services. The asset is prepared by removing any city property, all the decals, any equipment that's proprietary to the city. We will also work through the, using the city charter and Prescott code, we properly sell the equipment by getting approval from council to go to auction. And then we oversee the auction by putting it out to bid, getting the auction, receiving all the pricing for it, getting the payment, and then we turn it over to finance for dispersment. Then we also ensure that we take all the assets out of our record-keeping system. Which brings me to our next process is our record-keeping. All new assets are assigned a unique number and placed in our asset management system, a system called RTA that we've been using since 2004. All the information that's put in for each vehicle, including the VIN number, license plate number, year, make, model, class, mileage, end service date, purchase price, and any warranty information that is included on the chassis, body, or any parts that are unique to the vehicle. All maintenance history is input for each asset as well. So if a vehicle comes in for a repair, we make a work order for that asset. All parts that are purchased for that vehicle, all costs for labor, and all notes from the mechanic are input into the system and are accompanied by each vehicle. So each vehicle has its own history going forward. And this is what helps us to make those determining factors of whether we replace a vehicle or not. That brings me to our vehicle replacement process. There is currently a vehicle replacement fund. It was started in 2003. Originally, all vehicles and equipment were replaced via the fund. Divisions were charged based on an estimated vehicle replacement cost divided by equally over the lifespan of the vehicle. So for example, a $65,000 vehicle over a six-year lifespan, the department would contribute $10,833 per year into the fund. And at the end of that six-year cycle, there'd be enough money available to replace the vehicle. During the recession, approximately 2009, the city put a stop to funding those, that fund, and basically we were told only we could primarily produce public safety vehicles out of that fund. And then all non-public safety vehicles were, we were pretty much told to maintain them, keep them running until the wheels fall off, basically. We resumed a more timely schedule in FY14 and we began to replace, departments actually began to replace their own vehicles through their own budget separately, starting with the vehicles in the poorest condition and the highest maintenance cost and mileage. And then in FY14, we started trying to develop a vehicle schedule for replacement. I'm sorry. I also wanted to state that the, to this day, we're not funding the vehicle replacement fund, but still rely on it for public safety vehicles. And the projected FY17 ending fund balance for that fund is approximately $1.2 million. The following slides describe how the replacement process works. Fleet Services utilizes replacement guidelines to create an initial replacement list for review. When we do that, we consider the age, miles, hours, maintenance history, and then the vehicle's intended use or purpose. Some examples of the guidelines that we have and that were in place and that we've adjusted are PD patrol vehicles, used to go five years, 100,000 miles. We moved them to six years, 150,000 miles. Light-duty fleet was five years, 100,000 miles. We moved that to 10 years, 100,000 miles, or 6,000 hours. Solid waste vehicles, we were at five years, 2,000 hours. Now we're, we're all actually over that usually, but seven years, 5,000 hours. These are guidelines for what we look at, but it's not necessarily the determining factor. Some vehicles don't reach the 150,000-mile mark before they have a catastrophic failure and need to be replaced. Other vehicles, we'll evaluate them and see that they're in good shape, good working order, and they continue a useful life. Items that were put on a tentative replacement schedule will be reviewed by the departments to ensure that the vehicle needs to be replaced. If the department agrees, then we determine the specs for the vehicle based on the operational needs. It might be a direct replacement with a light vehicle or it might need to be upsized or downsized depending on the needs of the department at that time. Because as we all know, as our service levels change and as time changes, maybe our needs have changed within the departments and we need to purchase something that better suits their needs. Any asset that's been identified for replacement is reviewed to see if it can be repurposed within the city. We'll basically, this helps other departments that can't afford to budget for vehicles to get a vehicle that maybe was one person's trash, is another person's treasure. They might have a vehicle that's in worse condition that they would like to get rid of but wasn't able to budget for it. So we'll be able to swap them, vehicles, which I'll go over a little of that here shortly. And when we do that, it's an exchange, one vehicle for one. That way, we don't increase our fleet size. If it is determined that the vehicle has reached its useful life, it is sent to auction as a surplus. And then during the process, departments are asked some questions about the vehicle replacement, whether or not that vehicle does need to actually be replaced, or whether they can borrow a light vehicle from another department or division instead of purchasing a new one, whether they can rent that vehicle locally, somewhere close by where they can rent it at a moment's notice when they need it. And then if the vehicle's actually being properly utilized, that it's not sitting in the yard half the year or, you know, not getting enough mileage on it. So we try to provoke those questions to them so that they get thinking in their head, do we actually need this vehicle or need to replace it? Something that we need to consider going forward is a consistent replacement schedule. The idea of running a vehicle until its wheels fall off is not the right way to do it. Basically, at this rate, we need to plan for one-sixth of the light vehicle fleet replacement a year. And this will allow us to catch up on replacements and lower maintenance costs. One of the biggest problems that we face as Fleet Services is trying to source parts for older equipment. Oftentimes, it leads to increased costs for parts, shipping costs, and increased downtime for departments because we have a lot of old, especially the heavier equipment, that we can't get parts for and we have to order them from back east and it takes five to 10-day shipping, plus the cost of shipping. So also, the older equipment starts to have larger repairs. So a vehicle that has 5,000 hours on it or a piece of equipment, next thing you have the transmission or the motor failing, or a major hydraulic component, which could cost a significant amount of money. That's why we have started using the lifecycle analysis to determine if replacement or repairs are warranted for vehicles. And this is an example of our lifecycle analysis. Analysis is used to determine whether a repair costs more than the value of the asset. For example, this is not the picture shown, but an example is a, we have a 10-year-old garbage truck that it has a depreciated value of $30,000 and needs $50,000 in repair to rebuild the motor, transmission, and hydraulic system. Using the cost analysis, it's pretty easy to see that we've reached the useful life of the vehicle and it's not worth the city's money to put more into that asset. Therefore, the lifecycle analysis tells you that the vehicle has reached its useful life and needs to be considered for replacement. As you can see, each of the requests for replacement is thoroughly evaluated to ensure that it is in the best interest of the city, and all options or alternatives are considered before it's brought to council. This is a chart that shows the vehicle replacements that were submitted in the budget for FY17. Of these, I believe I only have nine left that have not been purchased yet. And you can see on there, some of them are from FY15 and FY16. Those were, what happens is sometimes the specs aren't correct. We don't get the pricing that we were, we originally got quoted. The pricing gets changed by the time we get to a point of ordering the vehicle, or the vehicle doesn't get received within that fiscal year. It gets received in June or July of the following year, so it has to be carried over. So the process, basically with these vehicles, when I get this, a list of vehicles, we have met with the departments and they've determined what needs to be replaced. The budget is already established through the budget process. Then I get specs from the departments. I would get quotes from the manufacturers. And then we go to council for approval. The whole process takes between six to eight months. And then once it's approved, we order the vehicle and then hopefully receive it within the same fiscal year. And I have a little note on here for consideration of the council, would be an alternative that we would present this list annually, which would be an approved budgeted amount, and present the list annually to council for approval. And then we can move forward on making the orders or purchasing the equipment. Anything that went out of this range of approved amount would come back individually or independently for additional approval, if it was more than the budgeted amount, or if the vehicle type or description changed. So that's just something to, a little suggestion or... This is an example of a recent string of replacements I wanted to go over. We had a vehicle, Vehicle 877, was a 1998 F-150 four-by-two with 112,000 miles. Was brought in, was scheduled for replacement as a public works frontline vehicle. I believe it was meter reading or one of the, one of the trucks that were running around constantly. So it was a frontline vehicle, was replaced with a 2016 F-150 of like size and model. Brought into Fleet Services for evaluation. We had been in talks with the IT department. They have a small S10 vehicle that they were saying wasn't big enough for them because of the equipment they carry around, but they had no budget to purchase a new vehicle for this year. We determined that Vehicle 877 still had some useful remaining life in it, and we were able to trade them, their S10 for the F-150 that came in, which met their needs better, and they got a vehicle that they would be able to continue using. The S10 came into our shop, Vehicle 889, and we were always in constant conversation with all the departments. So we knew that Parks and Recreation Service was looking for a lighter vehicle to run around on their golf course. So we traded them that vehicle, the S10, for a, was it 1996 Dodge Ram 1500. And that vehicle was in very, very poor condition and needed to be replaced, but was not budgeted because the Parks and Rec Division didn't have the money for it. So they went up getting a better vehicle, the IT department got a better vehicle, and the Public Works Department got a new vehicle. So the point of this is, even though the original vehicle wasn't run down to the wheels, we were able to utilize it in other departments and then get a vehicle that was run down to the wheels out of this, out of service and away from the city.
We have one question. Councilman Ozell?
I've got several, but I'll wait till mostly to the end.
Okay, fine.
But while we're on this slide, I just wanted to point out, my F-150 has well over 160,000 miles on it. And I pay well less, far less than $95 an hour to have it worked on. And I've never had a $25,000 or heard of a $25,000. I'm not doubting it. My problem is, I guess my question is, are we holding these departments, is this misuse? Is this, is this people just driving them inappropriately?
So this is including fuel and tires of the lifetime of the vehicle. So, and I did, I forget to mention previous slides, that we do a rate study annually. I'd love to know where you're taking your vehicle, because we have had the lowest rate for the last two years at $95 an hour. Ford, I take my truck there, it's $110 an hour to get your vehicle repaired there. Yes, this cost is loaded cost for the vehicle. Everything we've done to it, it comes in for electrical issues, it comes in for the motor, transmission, oil changes.
So you're saying 112 miles, 112,000 miles, you've put $25,000 in
Correct.
Cost in it, not necessarily repairs, but tires, brakes?
Correct, correct. Brakes.
Okay, I thought that that was a $25,000 repair for that.
No, no, it's the repair cost of the lifetime of the vehicle.
Okay, thank you.
And that includes fuel, you said?
Yes.
Okay.
I could be wrong. It might not include fuel on this one, but we do have a ability to track the fuel cost through our asset head in the system.
Okay.
All right. Right sizing the fleet. Fleet size and composition is very important. It allows us to ensure that cities, that the city has enough vehicles to deliver services to the citizen. It also ensures that the city does not have underutilized vehicles in the fleet. Right sizing is more difficult for some types of asset users than for others. There are predictable users, such as refuse trucks, meter reading, and street sweepers. We know how many miles they're going to drive a day, a week, a year. We can pretty well schedule them out for PMs and maintenance and replacement timelines as well, because we know about when big mechanical failures start to occur on those pieces of equipment. Harder to predict items and harder to right-size are law enforcement, construction, and snow plowing. These are less predictable because of downtime on vehicles. At any time, we can have up to six law enforcement vehicles at the shop. We have some that have to go on for service because they have a warranty, so they go to the Lamb Chevrolet or Galpin. And then those vehicles could be down at any time and they'll still need to continue to do their work. Similar to firefighting apparatuses, we have to make sure that they're up as often as possible and they have backups to continue to be able to provide service to the citizens when they are down. The fleet size is determined by the end user, based on their operational needs, and also upper management, who determine how sizes are, our services are provided. And the way that we provide services determine what types of assets that we need to run the city. Finance officials determine the budget that is available to purchase assets and how departments fund vehicle replacements. And elected officials set the policies, service levels, and approve A few items that we're working towards this year. We will be developing a 10-year vehicle replacement schedule for this, for the whole entire city. We have drafted and submitted a fleet management policy, which establishes a fleet asset review board. Fleet asset review board will help to determine what vehicles do need to be replaced. Will kind of act as a buffer between our department and other departments to say, yes, you do need this, no, you do not need this, what specs are appropriate for, you know, government vehicles. Basically, to be a board that has consensus over how we move forward on replacements and purchases, rather than one person, myself, making that decision for the entire city. We're also reviewing GPS systems for citywide views in all road vehicles. And this is not merely to try to track everybody, see where they're going. It's more of a telemetric side of it. We would like to track, get a more accurate tracking of mileage, vehicle utilization, fuel consumption. And then it'll also allow us to, we can input all that into our tracking, our management system, and it'll tell us when vehicles are due for maintenance.
We're also, the college's supposed to, we're getting ready to implement this deal for our vans, and it shows unsafe driving conditions. I don't know if this system has that, but it'll tell you if they're, they're driving in excessive speed, taking rights at excessive in excessive speed, taking rights at excessive, lefts at excessive, stopping too fast, things like that. So I don't know if there, if there is, this, the, the software people you use for this has got that offer too.
We haven't determined a single user yet, or GPS system yet, so I'd be interested to see what that one is and, and what it does, if it's of use to other departments in the city. The fleet asset review board, as I say, will be used to review the departments at least once every five years for right sizing, to ensure that we do, or we are utilizing the equipment, we have the right equipment we need, and that, you know, we're doing everything properly. We are trying to standardize equipment. In order to maintain cost, lower inventory levels, and utilize our mechanics' skills, we would like to standardize on types of equipment. Doesn't mean we're going to pay the top dollar for this type. We go by state contract, we utilize other larger entities, resources, to get the best price we possibly can, but we have to work towards our mechanic's strengths, because they have to be able to work on refuse trucks, streets vehicles, fire trucks, police cars, light duty vehicles, heavy duty trucks, equipment. They have to be able to work on everything. So if we have 10 different brands of each type of vehicle, we're going to have to have more software to work on them, more, you know, information, they have to go to constant training on it. So it's in our best interest to do that. Plus, the inventory level, like I said, we have about $900,000 of our budget's inventory. If we can standardize in equipment, we can lower our inventory level by not having to carry standard filters, and oil, and different types of hydraulic fluids, and different types of parts for each brand and type of vehicle. So that's something we're working towards with the departments, to make sure that we're looking at and, and purchasing like, make, models, and brands. Additionally, we are working to obtain our government fleet management alliance certification. It's a nationally accredited certification. We are very close to being within, meeting that guideline. I was actually going over this morning to see where we are, and reviewing, the policy that we're putting in place, that we're trying to put in place, will actually tick all the boxes to get us into compliance, and based on utilization, spare ratios, and having a policy in place that lets all the other departments know what's expected of them as city entities. So we would like to continue to develop ourselves and work through that guideline to make sure we're in the top 10 percent. Once we are, we'll submit that for national accreditation. So with that, that's the end of my presentation. If you guys have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Councilman Lozelle.
Thank you, Mayor. Just two quick things. The logos, are they done in-house, or do we, we farm that out?
Yeah, we actually put that on in-house.
You do?
Put all the logos and sticker in in-house.
Okay. The 1.9 operating budget, is that from the get-go, or is that what you're getting from the other departments, is that shell game happens with the budget?
Both. So that's our operating budget, and then we cost recover, so that is essentially the budget that we need to recover annually.
Okay. And last, I'm just, the 84 percent, I forget what they called it.
Productivity rate.
What's that?
Productivity rate.
Productivity rate. What is that?
It's based on billable hours. So let's say that an employee could work X number of hours, 2080, 2080 hours per year is their billable hours. So we have five mechanics. Based on that, we're billing 85 percent of our workable rate.
Suppose like, I think you said 75 was...
75 is...
And that's just because not, there's something in the bay, or you're waiting for a part, or something like that?
Yeah, and honestly, it's high. The ideal is 75. That way, you can have time for maintenance and...
And education and everything.
Education and keeping the shop clean, and there's a lot of things that you need to do in that extra 25 percent downtime that...
Sure.
We have been subsidizing that with the temps that we have. We, Councilwoman Orr had a great idea of using the, some local members of the community that have attended J-TED or C-Tech programs, and we've been utilizing them, and they help with a lot of maintenance, and we'd show them, you know, how to maintain vehicles and equipment. So that's how we kind of compensate for it at this point.
And I have one last one. Let's just say that somebody says, why are we doing this in-house? Can't it be more cost-effective? My question would be, do we have somebody in town right now that could, if a fire truck broke down, that could fix it?
Essentially, I'm probably could fix fire trucks.
Okay. But I mean, a local mechanic is just, that's a specialty.
Nobody could do garbage trucks.
Garbage trucks, or some of these heavy equipment we've got at the transfer station or, or elsewhere, a crane out at, I think it was at the, at the refuge, or the sewer area. I mean, that's a specialty thing.
A lot of specialty equipment that, there are vendors from the valley that can come up here, but getting them to reply and respond in a timely manner...
I understand that.
...is almost impossible. We have a lot of downtime, because we have to get parts and equipment from the valley, and that does equate to our downtime.
Sure.
You know, the, the reason that we do it is because we manage the assets. You know, we make sure that there is done, being done properly, that we're getting the right parts, that we're not buying the cheapest parts that we can throw on there that'll be repaired. I have an aftermarket warranty on my personal truck, and they try to stick me with the cheapest transmission they possibly could, because they want to save money. We make sure we're getting OEM parts that are going to match the vehicle, they're going to work life, the rest of the life, useful life of the vehicle, so that we can get the most out of it.
And I guess my big, my last and biggest concern is that the operators of, of the public's assets, which every one of these vehicles are, that the operators of them, whether you are checking meters, or you are going in to Phoenix on a legal call, that you're driving and operating these vehicles properly, safely, and like they're your own.
Correct.
I don't know if there's a way to, to make sure that happens.
That's departmental. It needs to come from policy and be put to the departments to, you know, to educate on that. But we do, a part of our policy that we're putting forward is, part of it is maintaining and making sure the vehicles come in for PMs on time, that, you know, putting some of the accountability back on the departments and say, hey, this is...
You've replaced the brakes eight times on this, and this guy keeps driving it.
Yeah, and that's something that we do internally, too, is if we have something that comes in with major repairs and consistent issues, we take that to our department liaison, and then we take it up above them if we need to...
Great.
...to their directors or whoever it is.
Because I know mechanics don't ever give their opinion about anything.
Oh, never.
There are, in the employee handbook, there are policies on safe driving and how to handle city vehicles.
Thank you, Matt. Councilwoman Orr.
Well, I have a huge list here of things I'd like to say, but I know we don't have time. I just want to thank you. It's a great presentation.
Thank you.
Lots of good information. And when I visited your shop, I was so impressed with the shop, the cleanliness of it, just everything about it, and, and the procedures that you've set in place. We're really fortunate to have you. And I'd also like to say, when I see our vehicles around town, you know, before I was on council, I really didn't pay a heck of a lot of attention, but now I spot, where's he going, what, not, not really, what are they doing? I know what they're doing, but they look so good. I mean, our vehicles really do, our garbage trucks. So I just, I just want to thank you, and, and thank you for checking out the C-Tech interns and getting this going.
Thank you for the suggestion. It was a good one.
Nice job.
Well, we bit off more than we can chew today. So I think what we're going to do is go ahead and finish out discussion on this topic, and we'll have to hold the other one to another time. We got about another, probably seven, eight minutes, so we'll take a few more questions here, and then we'll wrap up. Probably about 25 after, you're not done yet, by the way. You've got more questions, so, yeah. Or whoever wants to get up there and answer, it doesn't make a difference to me. Mayor Protim.
Thank you very much.
Sorry, I was running out the door. I actually almost left, too, so it's great thing.
Yeah, I noticed that. In conjunction with Billy, thanks for the service that you do. I would like at some point to see a cost-benefit analysis of how much dollars, since we incorporated doing a lot of our own work in-house, I can remember timeframe in history, first getting on council, when we saw some exorbitant bills coming in to manage our fleet, that we chose to approach this a little differently. And by doing it differently, while I realize we have more city employees in way of paying people to do our own maintenance, et cetera, on our vehicles, et cetera, there is a cost-benefit to the citizens. I mean, as Mr. Lozelle pointed out, these are not our vehicles privately, and we shouldn't probably be driving them like they were ours. We should be treating them like they're somebody else's, because they are, they belong to the taxpayer, and people should be driving those vehicles safely. But, but thanks for what you do.
Thank you.
And I, I'm fully confident, when you do your cost-benefit analysis, you can demonstrate in public to the citizens of Prescott, how many dollars of theirs we are saving them by having our own mechanics working on our vehicles.
Correct. And as I stated, Mayor Protim, we did do a rate study, and that included any comparable shops within the tri-city area, and then any specialty service shops out of the Phoenix area, and we were substantially lower in our hourly rate and markups, too. So I do confidently feel that we're saving money by doing the in-house services. Additionally, you know, we're giving, what I feel, and I don't want to upset anybody who owns a business doing this, but I feel that we're giving better service, because we take pride in our vehicles, they're ours. As city employees, they're our vehicles, so we take pride in how they look, how they function, and that they're not leaving a big mess or breaking down in the middle of the road anywhere, which still does happen, but we do take pride in that, so.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment, and just one more response. It's, it's a case of being able to get to the work that needs to be done to a public vehicle when it needs to be done, not waiting for somebody to come out of the valley, or somebody to make time just to get it in.
Correct.
Councilman Wilcox.
Well, Mike, I just wanted to compliment you and all the staff that work with you on developing this policy. I know you've been doing a lot of these things already, but to put it into one document and share it with the council makes me feel a lot more comfortable about approving a single list of vehicle replacements in conjunction with the budget.
Great, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Councilwoman Orr.
Yeah, one final thing I'd like to say, Mike, is the customer service side, because we've talked a lot about customer service as a council, and you have internal customers, and I know you do a good job with that, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
A couple of questions I have is, maybe next time, you can let us know what maintenance you have to do outside. I'm kind of curious what vehicles have to go outside for maintenance. I understand that you do engine overhauls, and transmission overhauls, and body replacements, and stuff like that with contractor services, and I understand that, but I just wonder if there's a vehicle that we have that just can't be done by your maintenance staff, and has to be taken outside, and I'd like to see a list on that when you get...
Yeah, Mayor, what we do is, and it'll be coming forward to council soon. Currently, we do alignments outside of our shop. We don't have any machine to do alignments. What we're trying to do is purchase a machine, a bigger essential thing, it'll all be in the memo and everything, but it's none of the larger heavy equipment. There's nobody around that can do alignments on heavy equipment. So we haven't had any of those aligned since purchase. So we're trying to get a piece of equipment in that we can do our own alignments on light duty, heavy duty vehicles, and make them safe. But that's just one thing we do outside. We were doing tires outside service, we brought that in-house. But like you said, most of the stuff we send outside labor are going to be for warranty work, or for major overhauls on motors, transmissions, and, and removing a body or chassis from a truck. We can do those things, we just don't have the time. We have mechanics that are expert, experts in that sort of thing. They can do in-frame rebuilds on a Cummins motor, but we don't have the 20, 30 hours that it requires to put them at that, and not have them work on anything else. So that's the kind of stuff we do outside service on.
Okay. Also, when you buy new equipment, if it needs radios, or rotating lights, or anything of that nature, do you normally take that off of other equipment that you're replacing it from, or do you add, actually order with that equipment on it?
It depends. We can't say that we're going to have that equipment on hand. We don't have any in stock now. So if we had a vehicle come in, and we're going to refurbish it, or repurpose it within the city, we could take parts and components off the one that was going out, and then put them on the other ones and upgrade stuff that we have. But we also work with the IT department to make sure that they have the radios on hand. And then when we order a new stuff, what I'm trying to do is make sure that the vehicle's completely specked, so that when it comes, we get the full cost of the vehicle to purchase it, it comes to you guys for approval for the full cost of the vehicle. We don't purchase a vehicle and then bring it up here and put $5,000 with the lights, and bars, and seat covers, and bed mats, and boxes. You know, that's not a loaded cost that you guys have seen at that point. You've seen the base model costs, and then we do upgrades. So what we've done with this year's purchases, we've made sure that everything's included in the cost of the vehicle. So they do come up with brand-new light bars. And light bars, the LEDs, they've made huge advances in the last few years. Their, their cost has gone way down, their quality is much better than anything that we've had in previous vehicles. So it is beneficial for us to purchase the newer equipment on them.
Okay. How soon do you think you're going to set, set up that fleet asset review board? Is that going to be something that's going to be done in the next few months, or is it already set up, or...
Yeah, I've had discussions with Stephanie and with Mike, and I think we try implementation sometime, first quarter of next year is realistic.
Yeah, I think that's important. You know, I'm looking forward to that as part of your, your management process, because I think it's important that we don't buy trucks that are not capable of doing the work that they were designed to do, such as the snowplows that you talked about earlier, so...
Absolutely, and that's another reason we like to make sure that vehicle assets are purchased through fleet, because we have the knowledge and the previous knowledge of the vehicles, and, you know, we have the contacts to, to get the right equipment, and we work closely with the vendors to make sure that, we tell them what we need, what